Raise your hand and repeat after me.
Hi, your name?
I'm Mike Hildenbrand.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Justly and impartially.
Justly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of council member of the city of Pine Island, Minnesota.
Discharge the duties of the position of.
Council member?
Council member of the city of Pine Island.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Jonathan Paul, you'll raise your hand and repeat after me.
Hi, your name?
I, Jonathan Paul.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Justly, justly and impartially.
Justly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of council member.
Discharge the duties of council member.
Of the city of Pine Island, Minnesota.
Of the city of Pine Island, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you, Bob.
All right, I'll have you rise. We're going to present the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Name's Seda. Before we start tonight, I want to welcome the Pine Island River Valley Girl Scout Troop 27380. They're in attendance tonight. These young ladies are working to earn their government badge. I want to welcome you to our council meeting. This is a good opportunity to learn about city government. Their troop leaders are Jonathan Paul, Melissa Hartwig, and Sharon Stuckey. So welcome. Hope you learned something tonight. All right, first on the agenda is consent agenda. We have our December 15th, 2020 regular city council meeting.
Mayor, I'm sorry if I may interrupt. I'd like to add, I, um, Jay, under administration and legal, we have a mobile food unit permit application from Don Scrumble Beef to be considered. I believe everybody has a copy of it.
All right, so we have, we need to make a motion to change that. Okay, I will make a take on motion.
I'm sorry, that's, I'd like to make that motion.
And I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. For the consent agenda, we have December 15th, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes. December 30th, special city council meeting minutes. And the library board member Sarah Tyne will be taking the seat of Dan Swinpeg, and he is designing the seat. Do you have a motion to accept our consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to administration and legal, Resolution 2101, request to approve the 2021 boards and committees. We have a new council member, so the boards were changed, and we were able to condense some of the committees to adapt them into some other committees to help increase the number of committees. Good. I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2101.
I'll move Resolution 2101, boards and committees.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2102, request to approve the 2021 license and fee schedule. There wasn't a whole lot of change in the fees from last year on that.
Sorry, I'm having a technical difficulty. Give me one second.
Take the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Correct. The only thing that changed in the license and fees was the water fees, which last year we passed a resolution where it increased by a certain percentage for the next 10 years.
Otherwise, everything stayed relatively the same. Taking motion to approve Resolution 2102.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the license and fee schedule? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Resolution 2103, request to approve a fee holiday. Do you want to explain this one, Elizabeth?
Yes, this is a fee holiday for new construction. It applies to new construction only. The city of Pine Island has done this for numerous years, even before I came to work for the city. And it's a small gesture that the city can do to inspire new growth within the city. It just gives builders incentive to build new homes within Pine Island.
We've had these in the past.
They seem to be, they seem to be working. And it's, like you said, it's a good gesture on a stage to invite some development.
I'll move to approve 2103.
You have a second?
I'll second.
A second. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question. I see it's for existing housing developments. I would assume a new development would also fall under this, correct?
Correct. It's an existing development such as one that has been through planning zoning and flattered things of that.
So if a new development is approved in the coming months, it might be grandfather after this.
It's within a development versus kind of a one-off house.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Resolution 2104, we're in the single digits yet. We're going to move to approve reimbursement of liquor license. We had this discussion back in November, December.
Correct, in December, the council had voted to direct staff to create a resolution which would reimburse 50% of the 2021 on-sale liquor license fees. This is the resolution before you.
And this is a result of the closures by the governor's office?
Correct, that's why we did on-sale only, so that it affects businesses that were closed due to the governor's executive orders, 20-04 and 20-99.
I'm going to move to approve Resolution 21-04 for the reimbursement of liquor licenses as stated.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I may add, this is, I think, known to all the council members. I think you probably talked about it the last time you did this, but just to confirm for the benefit of any of your licensees, as they would know, there is a portion of the liquor licensing process in Minnesota that the state handles, and there is some portion of fees that go to the state. We're talking about reimbursing the city portion of that. Of course, we can't reimburse the state portion. So, and the city portion is the bigger piece of the overall fee that's paid, but it's not the entirety of what a licensee would pay. So we'll talk about the city portion. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E, discussion on fencing ordinance regarding barbed wire fencing in non-residential zones. And this essentially is updating the current ordinance that we have that restricts use of barbed wire from city limits. Do you want to continue that discussion, Elizabeth?
Yes, it was brought to our attention by the building inspectors that our code is somewhat outdated. Currently, it states that barbed wire is only allowed in agricultural zones. If you look within our industrial zones, as well as some of our commercial zones, there is barbed wire fencing on top of some of the six-foot fencing, including our own city shop areas. So we thought it was time to look at this ordinance and do some updating. It would be my recommendation to have council direct staff to rewrite the ordinance that would allow barbed wire fencing on top of the six-foot fencing within non-residential zoning.
So this would still restrict fencing in residential. People tried to put barbed wire on their gardens and things like that, correct?
Correct, it would be non-residential only.
Non-residential. Does anyone have any questions pertaining to that wording or the request?
I'll move to direct staff to rewrite the fencing ordinance.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This would be good if they will bring up several businesses and properties into compliance. More of the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Discussion, or item F, discussion on council procedures at regular meetings, ordinance regarding order of business. The city administrator and I have been in discussion about moving our public input to the beginning of the council meeting, which is a common practice for many city council meetings. But this would allow both the people who want to participate and speak, they can use it at the beginning. If they don't want to stay at the entirety of the meeting, that way when they want to leave, it's not going to be disrupting the meeting as a whole like we've had in the past. I want to add even.
So our ordinance stated how our meetings would be run. It states the exact order. So I agreed with Mayor Fries when he brought my attention that perhaps public input should be at the beginning of the meeting. As he stated, just, it didn't help the public when they came to meetings and they wanted to provide input on something that council was voting on that night. Essentially, they were providing their input after the vote was taken. We put public input at the beginning of our meeting, wanted to engage, how many people are participating in the meeting, engaged, how long to give that public input time, as well as people can get their input before council actually voting on a subject.
So this will be an action, I mean directing city staff to change that.
I think it's good. It's something we've talked about off and on for several months here. So I'll make a motion to direct staff to look at our, to rewrite our council meeting procedure, to move the order to the, as we have it, to put public input at the beginning of a meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Want to remain further discussion, questions? Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Again, so I think what your report here says, and I think it's right, is that this is probably a more common approach to have the public input toward the top of the agenda as opposed to the bottom. Certainly, there are places that have it at the bottom like you do, but I think it's probably more common. Just two comments about that. There's absolutely no reason for you not to do this, make this change if council wants to. Just the two things I would point out is that, to the extent you may have a lot of public input on some given matter, there is a little bit of pressure then on the mayor or parliamentarian to sort of keep those comments, to not be grandstanding or not go on for so long that it interferes with your other business on the agenda. That's something that you can handle on a case-by-case basis, obviously. And then the other thing is that you'll want to, that the practice here has been, and I think it's a good practice, is that items that come up during public input really, it ought to be the exception that those items get acted on at that meeting as opposed to some future meeting. Because of course, whatever the item is that's being brought up, other people who may have a different view won't know that that issue is going to come up at a given meeting and won't have the ability to be here to comment. And so it can be viewed as inappropriate. Frankly, sometimes it can be legally inappropriate for the city to take action on an item when no one has known that that item was going to come before the city council. So it's fine to have it at the top, but just to the extent people would then think later in that meeting, you're going to take action on it, you need to be a little bit careful about that. Thank you. We have a motion, a second, anything, any other discussion?
I think it is important to note that with your public input, it's supposed to have a certain structure, right? So you walk up, state your name, where you live, and then you have roughly two minutes. I think the city of Pine Island's done a good job at laying those rules out before public input begins and keeping control of the meeting as that happens. This is an exciting change.
Absolutely. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item G, discussion on social media and communications policy. I will allow this table to my left to talk.
Yes, so as you know, this is something that's been discussed in depth over the last year. The communications director, Courtney Schaefer, and myself have gotten together, and in the packet we included an updated social media policy. The last policy was passed in 2016, I believe. So as you can imagine, social media changes quickly, so it was outdated. While we were updating the social media policy, we came across another community which has an entire communications policy. I included that sample in your packet as well. So although there isn't updated social media policy before you today, it would be my recommendation instead to have council direct staff to come up with an entire communications policy for the city of Pine Island, which would then encompass our social media policies. So rather than have multiple policies out there that we have to keep track of and update continuously, we would have one policy where social media would then be a subsection of that policy.
So council, any thoughts or questions pertaining to the information that was provided? It's pretty straightforward on setting guidelines on how the city can approach using social media, especially trying to convey messages from the city in a unified manner. And I think that's going to be extremely beneficial for our city to use that.
Yeah, I agree. It's timely upgrade.
Yeah, I think every major corporation has something similar to this in what is a city, if not a very large, you know, or small corporation. As such, I would make a motion that we direct city staff to develop a encompassing communications policy under which a social media policy can be parked as well.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you for working on this, on the process.
It has, but I encourage council members as well to note if there's anything specific that you would like to see while we're turning that policy down.
Thank you. We are moving on to item H, request to approve temporary liquor license for the Pine Island Relief Association, June 4th, June 6th, 2021. This is going to be for Chief Fest.
Here's the hoping for better days, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the temporary liquor license for the Pine Island Relief Association as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I won't be voting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item H. Mayor, I'm going to try and stop talking here, but just since you're newly the mayor, you're not going to vote on that because you're a member of the relief association and not an officer? Is that, just for going forward, to the extent you don't vote on relief association things, maybe you can say it?
Yes, sir.
All right, item I, request to approve a dance and assembly permit for the Pine Island Relief Association on June 5th. Hoping we will have Chief Fest, let's plan to be glad that's full.
I'll move to approve the dance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed. Item J, added item to our agenda, Don's Crumble Beef. And this is a permit or an application?
Yeah, mobile food unit permit, a food truck application. Mayor, I can just speak briefly to it. I spoke with Mr. Sanford, and he's got opportunities possibly to have his food truck in town before the February meeting. So I told him if he would get it submitted, we would consider it at this meeting, so.
All paperwork looks in order.
Move approval for the permit.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Everything set to go with this?
The only comment I would make is that it's contingent on them passing the required background check in addition to their certificate of insurance expires in March, so that they would need to update their certificate of insurance with the city in March.
Any questions with that? Otherwise, we have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are moving on to our planning commission.
We don't have anything from the planning commission. However, we do have two or three things coming up next month, so.
All right, let's move right on. Public Works and Engineering.
Mr. Burton is appearing via Zoom.
Craig.
There he is.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
That's awesome. Yeah. Yeah. So this resolution in front of you tonight is for, it's in regards to the meeting that we held on December 30th for the new development out west of the elementary school. This was one of the items that we reached out to the developer on. You directed staff to move forward with a, with the planning of the improvement of New Haven Road. That would be from County Road 5 up to the 90-degree bend there, about 2,650 feet in length. Because we are planning to assess a portion of the cost of the project to the developer, we need to follow state statute, and that requires the feasibility study be completed. And that's one step in the process. We'll have a hearing as well. But the resolution in front of you tonight would direct us to go ahead and develop the costs and prepare the report for the
So this is exciting, very exciting opportunity for the town with the development out there. Like you said, this is going to be another step in the process to getting the project off the ground by approving the feasibility study so they can get wind on that. It's a resolution, so.
I'll move Resolution 2105 for the feasibility study for New Haven Road Northwest.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any, anything else that pertains to the project that we?
I don't believe so. So the city is in the process of entering into negotiations with New Haven Township of all the road. However, due to the lengthy timelines that we have for advertising for public hearings, things like that, we needed to get this passed before council now.
Anything for you?
I'm not, I'm being, I'm over here being quiet.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is, this is going to be exciting. I'm excited for what lies ahead of that. All right, we're going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thanks, Craig.
Have you heard earlier, we made a motion and approved to move public input to the beginning of the meeting. Now it's starting next month. So this month, we're inviting anyone that is in attendance that wants to speak. You're welcome to participate and speak. We are going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Typically, council does not take action on items that are brought up in the chamber during public input. So you're welcome to your comments. We're asking you to keep civil, and if you have any ideas or thoughts or comments that you want to share, you're more than welcome. So who do we have? Ms. Levi, are you speaking for, for Ms. Willig? Okay. Yep, right up here, state your name and where you live.
Okay. I'm Lisa Levi, and I live here in town in Pine Island. Brenda Wobig was supposed to talk, and she slipped and fell today, so she is not able to attend. She had four questions, and she wanted me to just read them out, and then you can answer them afterwards. So the first question was, what did Kelly, the first question's for Mike, what did Kelly do wrong, and who brought this to your attention? Number two is for Mr. Voss, who brought it to your attention, and what exactly did Kelly share that was private and protected information? For Elizabeth, what did you explain to Kelly besides Courtney's job description as the communications director? And for Mayor Fries, why did you cancel your interview with TPT just one hour before it was scheduled? I think this goes with last week's, or your last meeting, and Kelly being censored.
I would say, you know, I'm going to allow Bob to answer this because it was, the process was followed legally, and naturally, we're not going to be divulging private information to the public, because that's a, you know, we're not going to do that. We can't do that. But do you want to answer?
Sure. Well, I mean, that goes to the sort of preliminary comment I made when you discussed moving this agenda in a month. One of my two points was typically you wouldn't take action tonight. As I sit here now, I don't know the answers to all those questions. I know the question that's posed to me is what private information that shouldn't have been disclosed is disclosed. Obviously, I'm not going to answer that question. That would make no sense. So I guess I would suspect that the council would want to, I don't know if you want to have staff noodle those questions and give you responses, and then let you decide how you want to share that with the public at the next meeting, or if you want to do something different. But I don't think we can sit here and sort of make up answers to those questions now.
And I would encourage Ms. Willig, she's been encouraging in the past, she's more than welcome to contact the city administrator for those answers. And that's been reiterated several times with that one. So if she would like to have a meeting, that's more than welcome too.
So she just, in the end, says, in conclusion, it sounds like the city of Pine Island is sweeping incidents of racism under the rug, hoping it goes away. I personally don't believe Ms. Levi will share private information, but if she did, let's identify it and move on. So I think everybody is just hoping that the city will really try to look at some racism things and look at them openly and have open discussions instead of just saying, this just needs to go away.
Thank you.
I'll add as well, there is a level of transparency that our constituents are entitled to. I understand there is some information they're not entitled to. All city council members and city staff could benefit from extra training on personnel data, privacy information, to know what is and isn't the best practices going forward. I do want to note that the two TPT stories published in December were very encompassing of the community, had a lot of feedback from a diversity of citizens. I think it is up to the city of Pine Island to grapple with those TPT stories and take this opportunity to bring the community together in discussion.
All right, next on the schedule, we have Chaz Neal. If you want to come up and introduce yourself and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Chaz Neal from Red Wing, Minnesota. Last December, Twin Cities Public Television published two stories highlighting Pine Island. It's come to my attention that a newly publicated elected official has stated that the story by TPT is farce. What is the definition of farce? A comic, dramatic work using buffoonery and horseplay, and typically including crude characterization and ludicrously improbable situations. I'm wondering what is comic and dramatic work, because all I've seen is racism and reality, not out on a screen, in a book. When you can have people walk freely with hate and discrimination across from City Hall, you can see Confederate flags and Blue Lives Matter flags in the TPT segments, which is the only farce thing in this whole situation. I haven't been back to Pine Island beyond talking with people. I'm very disappointed that the work that the people have done over the past seven months is just being denied, claiming that racism isn't in Pine Island. All I see is officials being blind to what they can't feel or relate to. So they ignore it and put bandages on wounds that need way more than a Band-Aid. a Band-Aid. It needs healing and restoring basic human needs. When the community, what the community needs is accountability, and not reactions, what we have seen. In July of 2020, you passed a welcoming statement, and only a week later, you had a special meeting to discuss an assembly permit, but only after BLM protests. Was that, was that put in place because of Black Lives Don't Matter here? If they mattered to the city and the community, why not speak about the trauma, instead of denying how BIPOC feel? Instead, the statement that I hear is that it's farce, which I definitely say is a big fat lie. When you have a town that is 96% white, and you can't admit that there is racism in Pine Island, you are complicit as well as supporting racism. And so we can look long and hard at American history, and see that Black and Browns have been judged, enslaved, and murdered, but that is farce, maybe in Pine Island, but in other areas of Minnesota? Rural racism is very much alive and going, and gaining strength by the day. And yet, BIPOC live quietly, and hoping and praying that one day America will finally be accountable for the hate and massacres of Black and Brown, and recognize that wrong has been done, and take reformative actions like the Civil Liberties Act of 1988. When will the city of Pine Island finally stand up for all and take action beyond meaningless words, something that us BIPOC hear and see, but with no accountability, we can't have unity?
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you like to come back? Introduce yourself and where you're from? Do you want to come to the lecture, please?
Are there any comments in response to Chaz that you guys were going to make, or are you going to save those?
Like we mentioned earlier, the council's not going to be taking action.
No, no, no action. I know that some of my.
So you can make them in public?
Sir, she's, sir, she's talking, sir, she's talking, you're done.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have the same question. I, I did get responded to directly, even though there was no action taken last month. But I will introduce myself. My name is Alice, Alice Kopp. I live in Pine Island, right behind City Hall. I've lived here since 1998. I use they/them pronouns. I just wanted to follow up Ms. Levi's and Chaz's comments regarding the censure of Kelly Leibold in the previous meeting. Just wondering why this was done, one, in the public sphere of the council meeting, two, why there wasn't more information expounded upon as to why this was happening? Understanding, like, perhaps, I, I don't even know if the question of private information being divulged was expanded upon or even discussed directly during the meeting, even though I was there. And those are just some questions that I have, as well as, is there going to be any sort of follow-up to the welcoming statement? I read in the minutes from the previous meeting that it was said that the anti-racism group in Pine Island has never contacted the council, the council for continued improvement, and that is just frankly untrue, as we have. We've met and discussed our protests, discussed protection from the Hugh County PD before. We've made phone calls with the communications director and Elizabeth. We've had interactions and still haven't seen any further movement. So I'm wondering what's going to happen, when that's going to happen, how, if there was ever a plan for the welcoming resolution to be made into something more than just a simple statement. And, just continuing to, like, question exactly how, again, Leibold violated a policy regard, like regarding censure, and what censure means? Because I also read that it was written as censoring. Is she being censored or censured? And what does that mean for her seat in the council? And, just kind of wanting to get more information as to why, and if it was possible to, you know, have a further public discussion about that, and how this social media is, policy is going to impact that, and how that will impact direct council member pages on social media, as opposed to the city council as a whole, and if it's going to affect them that way. And also, continuing, I do want to complete the statement that I, I would like to know TPT. Yeah. Thank you.
So if anyone has, if anyone else wants to have participation, but no, I appreciate your input, and your thoughts on that. Anyone else have public input?
Ms. Levi, if you could give our best to Ms. Willoughby on healing from her fall, that's unfortunate, and my thoughts are with her. Mayor, I'd just like some developments that happened today that are exciting for our town next Saturday. Deputy Hoff Shelty with the Sheriff's Department, who's in the Hockey Hall of Fame, will be here to skate with our kids. She's done this once before. So from 11:00 AM to noon, we're going to have skating with the deputy. So I think that'll be tremendous. And then at noon, we're going to have a Dodge County hockey, our high school. Our high school hockey team will put on a scrimmage exhibition, and then have a skate around with the kids to follow. So, a pretty exciting time next Saturday down at our ice rink.
Very exciting news. Expanding on that, two weekends from now, Saturday, January 30th, is the Pine Island Winter Fest, coordinated every year by the Pine Island Image Committee. Normally, they have a chili and soup feed at the golf course, and luminary ski and snowshoe trails. Unfortunately, none of the indoor events will be happening this year, but they will still have groomed ski trails and luminary candles. You can check out the image committee's Facebook page for more information. So the next two weekends, we have fun winter festivities in Pine Island.
And that's the Hoff Shelty, but yeah, she's been a ton before, and there's another good response with that. That is fun.
She has, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's great, and it's great exposure for our town and for our ice rinks, and a great work by the Sheriff's Department, so.
Well, my skating rink is getting you, is getting you quite a bit, and there's a really good article in the Post Bulletin, up there, and a number of volunteers. And I, what I'm absolutely thrilled about is, it's a, it's a volunteer event that is collaborating with the city, and you can see what happens with that, when, when you have, when you have good intentions there, so.
It's a tremendous success. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Moving right on, legal. You get to speak again.
Mayor, council, welcome to the new or the re-appointed council members, and I don't have any report from the legal part.
Good. All right. We're going to go on to claims. It's an action item. I'll move the claims.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we are already on to department monthly reports. Ms. Rachel, first, first of the year.
Hi there. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Rachel Gray. I'm the librarian here in town. And we don't have a whole lot going on this month, but we are going to be starting our One Town, One Title activities next month. We're reading the book Still Alice, and that author is Lisa Genova. It's all about early onset Alzheimer's. We're partnering with the Remember Project, which many of us know Marie Halawa. She's kind of heading that up in town here. And so we've got lots of programs that are going to be in conjunction with each other. So I'm really looking forward to that. We are open right now, so anyone is welcome to come into the library. We are limiting people to 10 patrons at a time inside. We haven't had a problem with that yet. But just come on up, ring our front doorbell, and we'd be more than happy to let you in and use the library. We're also taking donations to the end of February. If you have any books, CDs, DVDs that you'd like to donate to the library, feel free. We don't, we're not able to keep them all, but we do do a lot of sales. We're looking at doing a sale this spring. And also, we sell them online to different vendors as well. So we do make some money off of that, along with sharing them with other libraries in the region. So we are taking donations through February, but we do reserve the right to refuse items with mold or water damage or otherwise poor conditions. So, feel free to give us a call at the library if you have any questions about any of this. And we will be updating everyone with our One Town, One Title information online this coming week. So, stay tuned. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
Public Works. Anything from your neck of the woods? EBA, fire department. From you, sheriff, anything? Absolutely, sheriff.
Well, first of all, I came to kind of watch the ceremony, and I know how elections are trying for everybody, and putting yourselves out there, and even your opponents. I'm proud of all you guys for stepping up and doing the work that you're doing. So I came to congratulate all of you for a job well done. And sometimes it's a thankless job, as we all know, that has to get done. So, thank you for that. I wasn't going to really say anything other than that, but Mike brought up Jen Hoff Shelty, our new community engagement coordinator. So I know I haven't been here in 2020 due to all this COVID issues, but we do have a lot to, to get to process what happened all last year. But one of the biggest projects of mine was getting a community engagement coordinator. We got that through a federal grant. It's a four-year grant, or a four-year commitment, three-year grant, which was directly related to community policing. Jen Hoff Shelty is, is that coordinator. And, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to do what we really want to do entirely. But she has a big list, and skating with a deputy was one of them. We started coffee with the deputy, and it got shut down early. But just look for us to be around even more than we are. And that's, that was one of my goals to begin with, to have the community know who our deputies are. And trust me, we're working hard on that, and this was one, one big step toward that. So, super proud of, super proud of her to do that. And she was a perfect fit. So, with that, we'll have to probably go on on what happened in 2020, but we're holding our own. And we're just ready to look forward and maybe be seen a little bit more on the community, all the communities. But thank you. Anybody got anything for?
I'll add that Jen was at trunk retreat this year to help direct traffic. We had a line of cars like five blocks long waiting time for the event. So we appreciated having Jen there to, to help with that event. Having a more public face in the communities you serve is always important.
Hundred percent. Thank you for that. All right.
We will be back and see you around. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Sheriff.
All right, that brings us to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.